I will, going to call the meeting here of the Cambridge Board of Trustees. Our meeting of August 8th to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee, Brian Egg.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitmer.
Here.
Colin Beck. Here. Chris.
Here.
Phelps.
Yep.
McNally.
Present. Okay, thank you. We can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, can you tell us if this meeting has been properly posted?
It has been posted in the upper lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, Badger Bank, and the Village website.
Okay, alright. Looks like we're ready to go then. Public comment. We'll get started. If there's anybody that would like to speak, if you can come up and introduce yourself. And you have two minutes and 30 seconds, so.
He's been short. About two weeks ago, about a month, month and a half ago, we talked about the wastewater fluid meter. I did get the letter from Jane, week and a half, two weeks ago now. I do want to just acknowledge, you know, we came in the room, we do want to be good stewards of this. I think several of you looked me in the eye and said, "We will engage you on the next steps." That did not happen. I did watch the recording, and Steve Strauss, there's just certain things that are just not true. And I want to get the right people in the room. I've reached out to Jane and Lisa. I've reached out to Chris and Lisa three times over the last week and a half. We were provided a timeline to propose a plan. I do not have the requirements of what that plan needs to be. I do not know what the testing equipment needs to be, and I need to get the right people in the right room. We are trying to partner, and the way that this has kind of gone on the last month and a half, you know, we want to look forward, we want to be good stewards, but, you know, there was just a broken commitment again, and I've not been able to get a response. So I'm pleased, pleased, just asking this board, please help. I'm looking to get the right people in the room. Tell me who I need to talk to. If it's Lisa, if it's Chris, if it's Steve at the wastewater center, I just need direction, I'm not getting it. Thank you. And I know that's not public comment, but if there's any, like, if I can get a response or just direction, like, that would be very, very helpful.
We can't do anything at this time, sir.
Understood, but I just don't know where to go, which is why I'm at this meeting right now.
Okay.
So.
Well, Lisa and I will reach out to you.
Okay.
It's here, we'll make sure we circle back on it.
Yeah, we have lost a week and a half on the six-week timeline, just because I've not been able to get a response, so.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, is there anybody else that would like to speak? Okay, seeing nobody else, I'm going to close this session, or section of the agenda for public comment. Let's move on then to approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Alright.
Second?
Alright, we've got a motion and a second. Any questions, any issues, any concerns?
Yeah, for item 9A, I thought we amended Chris's motion to include that six-week deadline. Minutes didn't reflect that.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
Alright. Are there any other concerns or comments, questions on the consent agenda? Alright, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Gary's unanimously. Alright, moving on. President's report. Boy, two weeks ago, Todd, we had ourselves a little bit of a storm, and I know you'll be talking about this, but I wanted to let you know. I have been, I've talked to no less than six people who were very grateful with the dedication and the teamwork of you, Derek Schrato, Jay Ames, Cody Garcia, and Lee Farr for getting the village cleaned up. That was, I don't know how we could have that much damage and not be a tornado, but it is there. I still see the piles. I know it was, it was one bad storm, and even the golf course got, that's outside of our jurisdiction, but they lost 60 trees down there. 25 came down in the storm, and then there were another 25 that have been kind of half and half, and then there's another 10 or so that have lost their tops. So that was a pretty, pretty rough storm, so I want to thank you for that. Moving on, the, I gave to Lisa, and I think she's distributed this out, a letter from the town of Oakland pertaining to the paving of Blue Jay Way. And we can't really talk about it tonight, but I wanted you to know that this is something that I just received. And I had a phone call this afternoon with the superintendent. They just received it as well. They didn't know anything about this, and so there might be an issue here on timing, because everything is going to hit all at the same time here with the schools, back to school, and football, and practices, and everything else. But at least it looks like there is something that's being done with this, so that is, that is good news. And I will, I've got one other item, but I'll save it here for a little bit. So that's my president's report. Questions?
One other item related to something that's already on the agenda?
It's related, Todd. Okay, anything else? Moving on. Todd Lord, Director of Public Works, can you come up and have a seat?
Evening.
Good evening.
Todd Lord, Director of Public Works. As you know, we've been in the middle of a storm, we're still picking up from it. We had a little side trip because they're doing the river right now, and they're wrapping that up. I believe he might be done down there. We just finished, we just finished knocking the continued trees down on the one side so we could drag them across, and they started doing pickup this afternoon again. So we're back, we're back into the, pick up the sticks and twigs and stuff. So we're back to that tomorrow. And it's been a busy week. I had a class today for pavement, for, for the pavement, for the, for the village, for five-year plans and, and such things like that, and thanks to Chris for that. And thank, thank Eric for his flashlight Friday night. He's the one, he's the one that helped us get, get lights and power in the, in the shop, so. The only guy with a good flashlight. But, and the guys, the guys did, they're, they're doing an amazing job. They have just been kicking in, and kicking in, and kicking in. I'm waiting for them to have their last breath, is what I'm waiting for, because they've been going at it. So, we picked, we picked a good crew.
Alright, questions, sir? I've got one, Todd. In front of Amundsen, on the road, there's a lot of debris, and I don't know if that was a truck or something. Can you have a guy, just, can we sweep that up?
Well, we need to, we need to get the street sweeper out. But we were waiting to get the street sweeper out, we were going to wait till we could get all the brush picked up, so we're doing it all at once.
Okay.
Because we're using every guy, every guy available to, to pick up right now.
The gutter drain is filled.
What's that?
The gutter drain is filled there.
Yeah, we actually, is it filled again? Because Lee went around, Lee went around and, and knocked all the drains, so.
I just noticed it's out in the street, and I thought maybe it fell off of a truck or something. I didn't realize.
No, 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 it's part of the storm. It's the stuff sliding down, sliding down the roads, from the other roads. We were waiting to get all the leaves picked up before we went out with a street sweeper and swept it up. We haven't even got a full neighborhood cleaned up yet. It took pretty much a week just to do the neighborhood back here.
Okay, alright.
Can I just make a comment? I've noticing in meetings, a lot of times, we're getting individual requests for Todd and Public Works to do. Board members can call myself or Todd when we have stuff. Those aren't items that really need to be discussed at board meetings. You know, as soon as, you know, there's an issue somewhere, call one of us, we'll get the appropriate guys working on them.
And one more thing, the fire department was right there with us, so thank them.
Alright, well, thank you. Thank you.
Good.
Alrighty, moving on, village office updates. Lisa?
Yesterday, as a lot of you guys know, internet and phones were down all day. Don't realize how much we rely on, you know, especially the auditors started their field work this week remotely, so we couldn't, today we had a lot of requests. We need this, we need this, we need this. The last couple of weeks, that has been a lot of our time is working with the auditors, giving them all the requests that they need. They're following up with questions, asking for more information, documentation on certain things, so that's been a lot of our time. Obviously, the storm and the creek cleanup have been a lot on the guys, as well as in the office. We're getting a lot of phone calls, questions, so forth. Finishing up with open records requests with Jane. We are gathering information for the samples for the hybrid virtual meetings. I'll talk a little bit more when we get to that, but again, we put out a request last week on the clerk's list. We're hoping to get it all to you before today, but not having internet yesterday, we didn't get them all until today. So, apologize for getting those to you and not having them in the packet, but we're still waiting on responses, so. Just a lot of little things going on, and unexpected things going on.
Did they give us a reason why the internet was out for the whole, I heard Deerfield, but I don't know if that's true.
It was, like, six towers were affected. It was, all of Deerfield was out, as well as Cambridge.
They severed the line? Alright, thank you. Okay, any questions, concerns for Lisa? Alright, you're digging out. Okay, alrighty, well, thank you. Let's move on. Tammy, first of all, you want to give us a rundown on the bills?
Sure. The first run of bills were in the amount of $50,881.73. The second run in the amount of $2,263.45, for a total of $53,145.18.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills in set amount, because I didn't write it down.
I second.
Fifty-three, one forty-five.
Usually I write it down, yes, I was.
Alright, we got a motion, a second. Now we'll open it up for questions.
There's a bunch of items to line up for plumbing and building inspections. How many of those four?
So those are in and outs, so it's the, they collect, we collect the fees for the hall building permits, and then they bill us back eighty percent of, of the permits.
Then at the Fish Ponds, Lagoon Road, there's a boom mower for $17.50. That's some high.
Yep, so we had gotten a truck, Derek went out and was cleaning out along the Fish Ponds, as well as some of the retention ponds that we can't reach with our equipment.
Cool.
LBN had actually rented it, and we were able to use it for one day.
Awesome. Thank you.
Lisa, I had a, or Tammy, I had a question, and it had to deal with a payment to AVI Systems, and it's for Oakland Town Hall Rec System?
That's for Gary's equipment.
That was the, was the, the minus one was what Oakland, or what was the, there was a positive and a negative under there? And I figured we were each paying half?
I'd have to look. We pay all the bills for, oh, we did have a credit on an account, on that account, so that just reflects, and then Oakland pays us for cables, so we pay off the bills still.
Are there any other questions regarding the bills? Okay, hearing or seeing none. Roll call, please.
Trustee Franklin.
Yes.
Whitmer.
Yes.
Colin Beck.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Phelps.
Yes.
Brian Egg.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Alright, item eight, new business.
Well, we did have the bike path.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tammy.
So, I know Paula's been asking, we, we have gathered information, and we're working with Town and Country. So the state grant was in the amount of $185,250. The county grant was $209,250. We had donations of $24,000, for a total of $418,500. To date, it looks like $450,000 roughly was spent on the bike path, so a little more than was the grants and the donations. We'll be reviewing all those with Town and Country to make sure they're all coded correctly and so forth. One has been submitted to Dane County in the amount of $191,000, $91.35. They are currently processing that, so we have an additional 18-plus thousand to submit to the county, and then remainder of the bills will be submitted to the state for the reimbursement from that grant.
Okay, great. Thank you for doing that accounting.
Do you require anything else, Paula, on that matter?
Not at this time.
Okay, alright, thank you, ladies. Moving on, item eight, new business. Stipends for village board members, I think.
That was me, yeah.
You, Tim.
I don't know what they all are, and I don't know if we get stipend for every meeting that we attend, even though we may not be on a board, and, so, please explain to me.
Yep, so I did put in the packet three different items. We have the state statutes, which set that village board determines the salaries and so forth. Our ordinances say that they will be set by resolution, and included is our pre-schedule with the per diems. So, all members of the board get $40 per village board meeting and $20 per committee meeting. In addition, the.
So I guess the 20 per committee meeting, so let's say, I'm not on the fire, and I attend?
No, you would not, and I'll, so in addition, the village president gets $3,600 annually, and $20 for other village meetings that he attends, be they committee meetings or other meetings relating to village business that last one hour or longer. And that's set forth by our resolutions.
Where's the one about the president getting?
It's in the resolution.
It says per standing committee meeting, so to me, that would be a committee he's on.
Our ordinances do say that the president is an ad hoc member of all committees, no voting, but is an ad hoc member, so per standing committees and for other personal meetings to conduct official village business.
Where does it say that? 61.32? In, in here, or?
In the ordinances, I did. So in our ordinances, it does have the president to designate chairpersons, committee of, of committees, and so forth. The president shall be an ex-official member of each committee, but then goes on to say, confirming, or making the appointments confirmed by village board, and so forth.
Kind of breaks it down, Paula, into the per diems portion of that.
No, I saw it there, I just read it, I just read it differently.
Chapter 2.08, 040C2, or C1 is the ex-official member of each committee.
I would have just thought that the extra $3,000 a year would have covered the other committees.
And just as aside, both state and our ordinances, any changes in per diems cannot be done in a current term of board members. So, when changes are made, they're either, if they're the following year, it's just for those reelected the following year. Otherwise, you set them two years out, when the whole board, at that point, would be new.
So I guess, Mark, I would ask you, in the interest of, I mean, maybe not having to attend every single committee meeting to help save, because the extra committee meetings you go to every month can pay for flowers downtown or for something else, versus you getting the $20 to attend those meetings? I mean, it adds up, and it does make a difference, and, I mean, I think people here on the board can report back to the board what, what we're doing, so I would just want you to be a little more aware of the meetings you're attending.
Okay, I'll take that under advisement. Anything else?
And just so you know, I'm not the only person who had concerns about that. I'm just the only person who ever speaks up about anything.
Tim did. Tim brought it to.
Yes, thank you, Tim.
So does it answer your, does this answer your question? Yes, it does, thank you. Lisa, thank you for the research.
Okay, anything else? Okay, moving on. Policy regarding board members attending board meetings remotely. I think Chuck, you had, you had volunteered information here regarding your status of employment and some training, so.
Yeah, I like, thanks, Lisa, for providing these examples, what the other municipalities are doing. It's like Black River Falls is a pretty simple little ordinance here that lets people call in or participate in the meetings if they're gone for legitimate reasons. It does work, so. I don't know, what do you guys think?
Tunnel Liberty Grove has a really nice, short and sweet one also. That's the second page of the packet.
My, my concern is people, I don't think anyone here would abuse it, but, you know, in the future, I just hope it doesn't lead to people taking this as an opportunity to not show up, because they don't want to, and just calling in. So that's my only concern. I think we're mature enough where we can, if it's legitimate reasons, and make it work, but.
Well, Ashland's on the first page does have, does, does call out the expectation of any member of council to attend a meeting in person unless the following conditions apply. And I think one of those conditions that I would add in there is if, you know, your work doesn't make you available, because for work reasons, you have, you have to be away. I would add that one. If we wanted to add any stipulations, I would just add that into the other ones that they have, you know, mentioned on, under there.
I agree.
You could put a couple of these together and make a good one.
One thing I might suggest, so, one of these, now I gotta go back and find it. It has a, so we have our conduct, our expectations of conduct. It might be beneficial to include information for remote, like, you're supposed to mute when you're not talking, those sorts of things, those etiquette things that, I don't know if you want to have it in a policy, per se, but in a.
Some of these include that.
Some of them do, right.
So.
What are some of the concerns of the staff, Lisa, with this?
I put together some of the stuff that we've gotten from other municipalities. You know, some have had very good results, some have had some issues. Some municipalities have gone back to fully in-person since COVID, some have remained hybrid. Some of the issues noted by municipalities' connectivity, being able to see and hear both those present and those who are remote, to make sure that technology, how some have had to buy cameras, microphones, to be able to ensure that those in person can hear the person remotely, and vice versa. Internet issues, such as yesterday, that it's understood there may be issues on either end that may cause issues.
On your question of equipment, would it, would it be better to have outlined that it's the responsibility of the board member to provide their own equipment, to be able?
I think their own equipment on their end, unless the board is at some point moving toward tablets or something for all board members, you know, some municipalities have done that.
Do we have the technology on our end to see the person talking and communicate with him, and has it been tested?
I don't, while we have a laptop, we can use a laptop. Will people out here hear Chuck, if he's on the laptop? I don't know, we haven't tested how that would work.
Doesn't the library have?
The library does have a whiteboard, so, or smart board, you know, so if we get trained, and they allow us to use our whiteboard, to be able to hook up to that, to be able to use as an option. Most, or, people have said that the upgraded Zoom appears to be the most successful. One thing is, you know, knowing ahead of time. We did talk to Jane, Jane did say it is okay, in her opinion, to say it is just available for board members, not for residents to call in remotely. So we need timely notice that you would need to be able to set up the Zoom meeting and get the logins to whoever is coming in remotely. You touched a little bit on, if you want to, do you put in place, you know, when it can be used? Emergencies, work, vacations, so forth, you know, having in place, what, some of these do, say the virtual count toward a quorum. Do we want the virtual counting to a quorum, but at the same time, do we also want a quorum in person? So that you don't have five people calling in and two people here, you know?
Well, I think that would have been, you know, from what I've read, it's, unless you have an issue that you can't be here, you know, if you're sick, or you're, you're on a job site.
These are just issues that other communities have grappled with, and so, and I just want to make it clear, it's not, I'm not saying this isn't a good idea. It's my job to look at what issues could we face that we have to address. If we don't think it's going to be an issue, we don't put it in place, and once it becomes an issue, then we address it. You know, so it's one or the other. You know, so those are some of the questions that other communities have addressed.
I'm trying to keep it as simple as possible for everyone. I was, my point is to call in, to someone, put me on speaker, the microphone.
It's simple.
It's super simple, and, you know, it's for two months.
And we have done that on occasion in emergencies, weather emergencies, where someone can't get here for a committee meeting to pull the phone up and have the speaker by it. Usually in a committee meeting, it's a smaller group, so everybody sitting there can hear, but it has to remain a public meeting so that anybody in the audience can hear what you're saying.
Do you think we would want to include, like, legal counsel to be able to attend virtually? So that we could save on her travel time, considering lawyers on the west side? Or is that not?
I think that'd be great.
The good.
Yeah.
I'd rather not pay for her to drive. I'd rather not pay for her to drive.
Yeah, that would save.
If she'd be willing to do it.
If she'd be willing to attend.
And we had the equipment.
On the, on the days when we need her, yeah, that'd be great.
The equipment is available and it's through the library. And if we work in conjunction with the library, which I don't see there would be an issue, it can be done very easily.
It can be done, yeah.
And I just, you know, because we had, at the hospital, we had to do virtual meetings, you know, where he was in an office during the COVID and they all had their little camera and everything and there was like ninety-nine people on a screen. It was big, but still, it worked.
We did all of our board meetings.
From what I understand, that's what happened. I think it's a great idea. I think it was great that Chuck wanted to still attend while he was at work. My opinion.
Yeah.
I've seen, I mean, I've seen where, you know, I think all the trustees are dedicated to the Village of Cambridge. We're all here. We may not always get along, but we are always here. We seem to be engaged and, and we take the time to look at the materials. It's not lost on me that this last election, we had a spot that was open because there weren't enough people to fill it. And so when we do have folks that step forward and say, you know, I'm willing to, to serve and they have an employment situation, or maybe it's children, or whatever it might be. I think that we need to keep that in mind. I'm in support of, of doing something here that can help Chuck. I think you've been a good voice on the board and I think that your commitment is still strong here. And you'll do what you have to do to, you know, to put your shoulder into the wheel on your committee assignments. I don't have any problem with this. I've talked with some of you about this and I think that we just have to be understanding that it's, it's a little different than maybe what it was back in nineteen fifty-five. Not that I was around it.
Nineteen, it's different, yeah.
Yeah.
And I just didn't want to, I want your input on what our policy would look like. I didn't feel it was my job to say, here's a policy, vote yes or no, you know, that's why, here's the examples, what do you like, what don't you like?
Well, I would actually like to make a motion to adopt a policy that is modeled after the Black River Falls policy. And with an understanding that then maybe in the next meeting, we can bring this up again and we can add additional items to the ordinance. But Chuck won't be able to attend the next meeting unless we have this in place. So that's why I would like to at least get this basic ordinance passed. I said way more than just a motion.
That's a motion? I second that.
Let me just, we cannot. We can't approve an ordinance without an ordinance being presented. We can adopt a policy and we can then create ordinances to back the policy.
Okay, so I can.
But we can't adopt an ordinance in.
Okay, if I make that policy, if I change the statement to say, I make a motion to have a policy similar to the ordinance and then let's draft the ordinance.
Motion to adopt a policy similar to Black River Falls ordinance?
Correct. For ordinance for meetings by telephone or other communication technology.
Yes, second that.
Can I ask another question?
Yes.
I don't know what that ordinance is, but are you going to optional attendance or is it just a rarity that someone might be missing? But it's optional, so I gotta go down and tell them.
It would be.
The exception, not the rule.
It would be an exception, not the rule.
Gary, how would this work for you?
But policy does not say that.
I, I understand that.
Can we ask Gary's opinion on this since he?
Well, if there's nobody here, I won't be doing the meeting.
Right, but.
We lose one or two, that's fine, but if it becomes optional and half the people stay home, I'm not probably.
That's not what the intent of this is for.
I didn't, I didn't know.
Thanks, Gary.
But the ordinance says written.
Okay.
Does make it sound optional.
Correct, but what, but what I stated, because I thought I was doing something that I'm not. So, so I, I wanted to model it after this one.
How about I?
With an understanding that we were going to add and edit this ordinance moving forward to add in the additional things we want, like when, when people could use it.
What if we just pass a policy allowing Chuck to have the call in for the next four board meetings as a full voting member and in the next two or three meetings, we develop a written policy to address it.
You fine with that?
Then we're not watching.
I just, what do we need to do in order to allow Chuck to call in to the next meeting? That's the only thing I'm worried about is the next two, three meetings Chuck will not be able to attend and I'd like him to be able to call in to those.
Me too.
So what do we have to do to make that happen?
You'd have to have a policy written right now that we could pass, a written policy. That right now you're telling, you want to make, you know, have one, which is great. But to pass it tonight, we'd have to have the written policy right in front of us to do it.
We.
The policy is let Chuck call in for the next four meetings and be a full participant member.
Plus committee, plus his committee.
Plus his committees. Is that not doable?
That's doable. We can then decide if we have Zoom in the computer or the library.
Yeah, or it's just a telephone.
Yeah, or telephone. And in the meantime, like you said, then work on a complete ordinance.
Hopefully by like week two or three.
Better somehow it works too with Chuck on the other end.
And we can use the Black River Falls as a draft to start an ordinance. And, you know, we could take into some of the account, some of the comments that have been brought up to include in that.
Do you want to amend your?
I, I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw. I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Okay. You're okay with it?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so now we're back to scratch here.
I'll make a motion that we allow Chuck.
That we create a policy to allow Chuck.
Create a policy, allow Chuck to attend the next four weeks, is that right? Next four, four board meetings. Four board meetings and any committee meetings.
It's the next two months worth of meetings.
Where he's unable to attend due to work conflicts.
I'll second.
And that would be, take us through the end of September? And then by that time, hopefully we'll have another policy in place, which then would be effective for anybody who has to travel for business and so.
And we can do either policy or ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. One of the comments I wanted to bring to light, Lisa, is you, you brought up a concern a while back and I just wanted to bring it back to the forefront, that you don't ever want to be in a situation where you have a hostile crowd out there, right? Can you elaborate on your issue with that?
Yeah, this, we had some of this discussion during COVID when we were looking at coming back in person.
Solar was an issue.
We had solar, we had the Vineyard subdivision, we've had some Dancing Goat. I don't want to be in a situation if it's a full board where I have twenty not happy people sitting in the audience and two board members here and five calling in remotely. Or a committee meeting where one committee member may be there and two people are calling in remotely. You know, and that was discussed back when we were talking about hybrid toward the end of, of COVID because we had a number of heated meetings back during that time.
I think in the, the creation of the policy or the, you know, where we go moving forward, it has to elaborate off of that, that this is the exception, not, not the rule when it comes to meetings. Ideally, all of us, as we, as we're sitting up here now, is what we want.
Yeah, because I don't think vacation is a valid reason to attend. I think if you're on vacation, you should be on vacation.
Yeah, you should be on vacation.
Yeah, I think medical reasons.
Right. Work, work conflicts.
Conflict, yeah, I think, I think to me, those are like the two biggies that would allow us to have all the type of.
I didn't attend last meeting for a medical issue I had, so.
Well, it would have been, it would have been nice for you to be able to do that, yeah, if you, if you were able, yep.
So although you prefer brevity with the policy, I actually am in favor of more outline defined, so Town of Osceola, it's long, but.
Yeah, it's like six pages.
Yeah, it's long, but it defines those sorts of things. So perhaps not quite so short.
Yeah.
But maybe not six pages.
Maybe not quite that long?
Quite that long.
Okay.
But, you know, outlining those sorts of requirements.
So who would draft that?
The staff will.
That's a great question.
Staff drafts stuff, of course.
I can take comments that were received tonight. We can take a look at Black River Falls. I know Liberty Grove was another one.
And then Osceola's got to be defined.
Comments that you see in other ones, like adding the attorney. Adding if there are stipulations, you know, if it's for work, so forth, like the first one had. We can kind of put all those together. I can talk to Jane and see if an ordinance works best or a policy. You know, so as you look through these and there's items you like, you know, the decorum, the expectations of.
Future agenda item.
Yeah.
But what do we need to do to cover down for Chuck?
We've got a motion in a second.
Got a motion in a second?
Yep.
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'm sorry.
In the quorum and for decision making.
Yeah.
Yes, so, you know, we'd have to allow Chuck to attend the next four meetings virtually if you want to include FAA voting member and for purposes of quorum.
Yes.
Paula, you had something else you wanted to say?
And again, as we're drawing up this ordinance or as you're going to be working on whatever the ordinance or policy is that we're putting in place, this is for board members only, not for the public.
And possibly the attorney.
And the attorney, board members and the attorney, not for the public.
And I guess.
To attend virtually.
You know, and we have multiple staff, but, you know, you, the staff included, so if, when I was home with the surgery. Yeah, it's.
No, we couldn't have you because you were off and you couldn't be coming in to work. See, when you get into staff, for medical reasons, that gets a little if-ier, so, yeah, yeah, but.
Do we, do we get, like, when MSA attends their meetings, does that count towards bill of hours?
Probably.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, yeah.
Slippery slope.
Yeah, and that's, you know, where some of the discussion the last time too was during COVID.
We can always adapt.
Sometimes our meetings were faster and stuff. Were they as productive? Not always, you know, depending on how into the people on the other end are, you know. You know, so, yeah, do we want consultants here in person to present or remotely, yeah.
Okay, so the motion that we have is to allow Chuck to participate in the next, you know, meetings, four meetings, whatever, end of September.
Through the end of September.
Yeah. And then we, you're going to, staff will work ahead towards coming up with a resolution that you can bring forth for final approval here by the Board of Trustees. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Okay, moving on, item number.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome.
You're stuck with us.
Item nine, Fire Commission update. Chris?
The latest on that is we have a, a Fire Commission meeting scheduled. Now there's an agenda that's out there for the tenth, this Thursday. I believe it's at eighteen thirty. It's state on there where it's going to be at. Town of Oakland. So it'll be at Town of Oakland and, and that's all I really have to report on that. I mean, we have an election of officers during that meeting. That's going to be an open session. And then I saw on the agenda that there's three closed session pieces on it, so.
Wonder if it just to discuss the letter that the village sent.
And there's some back and forth right now whether or not that needs to be an open session or closed. But that is all I have to report on that. So we'll find out on the tenth who the new officers are.
Okay, alrighty. Anything else for Chris? Okay, thank you. Moving on to item ten, correspondence, Dane County Senior Nutrition Program.
As you know, earlier in the year, the provider for the senior meals, the contract was ended abruptly. Consolidated Foods has been filling in starting in September. Atlantis Valley Foods will be the new caterer for the senior meals. I think they're pretty excited about it. You know, one, to have a contract in place finally. Meals are changing up, food is going to be a little different, more options and so forth available, so. They're excited that.
Will there be vegetarian options available now?
They do have some vegetarian, they also have some gluten free. They have salads coming back where salads are an option.
Nice.
So they have more.
Because I think I might be of age to be able to do that.
Yeah, it was, it was funny because I was talking to Dawn and one of them had plant-based shrimp. And it's like, she's like, I have to figure out because I know I'm going to get questions, but what is plant-based shrimp? You know, so they do have different options available.
Good, I love it.
Okay, all right, anything else? Okay, questions, referrals of staff, future agenda items. I'll start off. We had earlier the Dancing Goat. Is that something that we need to?
Yeah, Chris and I were going to be setting up a meeting with them to.
So as I understood it, we were giving them eight weeks and we've already seen the two, two weeks.
Well, no, it's been about a week. Jane sent the letter last week.
But by the time you meet with them, it'll be two weeks.
Yeah, and.
Reset the clock? Well, we did discuss that, as long as they're making a good faith effort.
A good faith effort, and part of the discussion was if they are using the equipment that we, you know.
Are lending them, or if they're going to purchase their own equipment.
If they're going to purchase their own, then they're going to need a more robust plan, but if they show.
So the way it works is the equipment will be there, this is what I understood from reviewing it online. They'll take a sample every day and bring it in for us to test?
And that's part of it. COWC has offered.
That really doesn't make sense to me. I mean, if.
Our goal would be that our staff would be taking the tests at first on a daily basis and then random, a sample. COWC would be their licensed facility that they could.
But I'm talking about them having access to, I mean, if they're dumping stuff down the drain, alls they gotta do is take yesterday's sample and bring it as today's sample.
And that's part of the discussion, why we want our staff to do it randomly, not.
Plus, we should be able to keep it under lock and key.
We initially had a conversation with COWC to try to work it out between Water and Sewer and COWC to try to figure out if we can maybe place the sampler by the lift station, you know, talking out different scenarios in which we could work. And we, we didn't bring in the Dancing Goat because we thought we could work it out between COWC and Water and Sewer, place the sampler, you know, away, but still be able to monitor it. COWC went in another direction after that meeting that we had. And that brought a lot of, you know, Dancing Goat thought they, they didn't have a seat at the table. Why didn't we get invited to that? Well, we wanted to take, to take care of it on our, on our own between Oakland and, and Cambridge, so.
But we gave them a deadline in the meantime and we're not giving them any feedback. So, I mean, I can understand their frustration.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, and now there's four weeks left in the deadline and I just don't think that's reasonable on our part. From their perspective.
Yeah. So Lisa and I will reach out to them and, and Sean, if we need to have a meeting out at, at the wastewater station or we haven't here, you know, wherever the case is, we'll, we'll hear them out, what their frustrations are and, and, you know, if we have to come to the conclusion at that meeting that, okay, we've now had this meeting, now your clock starts. I'm fine with that.
And I think it's important to, to know that, that the COWC, Steve. COWC asked us to specifically not have Dancing Goat interact directly with, with Steve from COWC. And so we're, we're trying to. And so we're, we're trying to honor, we were trying to honor that, not keep them out of the conversation, but we were trying to honor what we were asked of because Dancing Goat is one of our, Dancing Goat interfaces with us, we interface with COWC. And, and, and COWC asked us to maintain that difference between their staff versus.
But we also.
Us and our customers.
Dancing Goat here a month ago or so.
Right.
And we told them that we'd be communicating with them and getting them involved. And the only thing we communicated with was a letter from our attorney. That looks pretty bad, I think. I mean, shame on us. We've won.
They, they did have copies of the agenda. They knew we were talking about it, you know, but.
I think we're making excuses.
No, but COWC's point directly to us is that the village has ordinances saying the village should do this. And we, as the receptacle of these byproducts, want the village to follow their ordinances. And that's when that direction, like Chris said, we were trying to see if we could place the sampler by the lift station to see, narrow it down, is it coming from that side of town? Can we get the proof?
Could I see what Jane sent them specifically?
I had, you guys had all gotten copies of what was sent.
Did she send it to the village email?
It should be at the village email, yeah, last week it would have been sent.
Well, can we just leave it where we'll get an update then on this, at the next meeting?
Yep.
And make sure that is something that we're talking through and, Bill, I can understand where you're at. On this, I can, but I also know that schedules are somewhat fluid. And if we need to just bring updates in as far as when things, the effective dates, I think is the big thing to communicate.
Yeah, I mean, we can sit here and say shame on us all you want, but we have an ordinance that we have to abide by. So, I mean, we, we projected out that we, we had a suspicion. We got our suspicion from COWC that we had some, some plugs that cost a lot of money. And we're getting, we're getting feedback from Oakland where, hey, they don't want to pay for that anymore.
Or jeopardize our permits.
Or jeopardize permits. So, you know, we have to get the lawyer involved. And that, that rubbed the Dancing Goat the wrong way. I understood that. I got an earful from Nick on my, on my walk slash run and, you know, took ownership of it. That's the, the least we can do in this situation. But I'm not, I'm not gonna, you know, sit here and beat myself up because of communication. There's other communication things that, you know, where we've invited them to the table and, and they haven't showed, so. We, our guys can't even go out there and take samples anymore. They've been, they've been shunned, you know, off of the property. So, I mean, we could sit here and self, you know, flatulate ourselves and whatever the case is, but it's, we have to be good neighbors. We have to try to take the high road in this and I think open communications is the best, best way forward. In this situation, like I explained to Nick, apologize, but we thought we could take care of it from a COWC Oakland standpoint. And he was upset and I got an earful from him about it. Got an earful from Sean tonight about it, so. But at the end of the day, we just, we want to do what they want to do, right?
And, and trying to be the good neighbors and partners by offering the use of the sampler that COWC has and the testing being done by COWC at a reduced rate, so they're not incurring those expenses.
Yeah.
You know, so we did take those steps to.
Okay, all right. What we're going to do with this. Is there anything else anybody wants to see for a future agenda item?
The, the different policies.
Yep.
And, and ordinance, a possible policy or ordinance? Who's included in this, whether our legal counsels, staff, whatever the case is? Just what examples we're going to use and what we're going to lean from to make ours the best suited for Cambridge.
All right, anything else? Okay, there's some upcoming meetings. August 9th is the library, the 10th is Public Works, 14th is Plant Commission, 15th is Water and Sewer, and we will meet back here again, August 22nd for the Village Board. Economic development is going to be determined here at some point. That takes us up to item 13.
Make a motion to adjourn.